November, November 18th, meeting of the Clayton Planning Board. Glad to have you here this evening. Before we get started tonight, let's do a roll call. Haley, I'll let you do that.
Yes, I will go down the list. Just say here if you're present. Chair Jody Dupree.
Here.
Vice Chair Derek Applewhite.
Here.
Ronald Williams. Ronald Williams is absent. Daniel Gleason.
Here.
Mike Thoresky and Anita Bland have been excused. Jason Carter.
Here.
Deborah Hooker.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Here.
And Tom McCurney.
Here.
I think we have a quorum?
Yes.
All right, before we get started this evening, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Do we have any adjustment to the agenda for tonight?
There are no adjustments to the agenda.
All right, no adjustments tonight. Item three, approval of the minutes, and we just had a meeting a couple of weeks, two or three weeks ago, so we don't have any minutes to approve at this point. I guess we'll have those for next month. And we are now all the way down to item four, our public meeting, which is 2024-138 CZM, Winston Point 3H Conditional Rezoning Master Plan Amendment. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Yes, and before Audrey is going to present this project, before she does, I would like to go over the history of Winston Point a little bit for the board. There is quite a lengthy history with this project as it is a master plan development. So this project was originally approved in Johnston County's jurisdiction. It was approved in, I believe, the late 90s, early 2000s. It was inherited by the town of Clayton when the town expanded its ETJ in the 2000s. And so with that, the town, you know, brought it into its jurisdiction, but it had its original master plan that was approved by Johnston County. It's gone through several amendments over the years on the cover sheet of Exhibit A, which is in front of you at your seats tonight, which is the master plan. There is a list of them. Some of them have been minor modifications. Some of them were major modifications that were heard by Town Council. I believe in 2008, there was a major modification to add land, and there was another major modification in 2013. The rest have been minor amendments over the years, mostly to change road networks and whatnot throughout the phases and shift phase lines around. The applicant for this project wanted to revise the Phase 3H. 3H was originally, or is currently shown as a church use. They came in, I believe, in 2012 or 2013 with a similar request, another developer. That was ultimately withdrawn before it went to the board. But tonight, they are proposing to change that use from church to single-family attached residential. The only way now with the new UDO that was adopted in 2024 to amend a plan development is to go through the conditional zoning process. So tonight, before you have a conditional zoning type three application, this was originally a plan development. So the master plan before you tonight does not meet all of the criteria of what you would typically see today as a type three conditional rezoning. And the reason is because, excuse me. The reason is today, those standards would not apply. So a lot of Winston Points already built out. A lot of those are sold lots owned by, you know, individual homeowners. So we cannot go back and update all of those phases that currently exist. So they are proposing to modify just Phase 3H. Per UDO standards in place now, they were required to come through as a conditional rezoning, and we had them match the intention of the original plan, which just designated this as a use and set dimensional standards, which is what they have today. And then, one other thing to note, too. It was mentioned during the process that the owner's certification was last signed on the owner's consent form in 2023. So by law, we cannot require a notary signature for that. So we cannot require them to update that. So we do have owner's consent, but it was not required by law to be updated. And with that, I'll turn it over to Audrey. We will go more in depth with her presentation.
Right. I think Haley did a very good job for the history. I'll be repeating some information, but tonight, Chair, Planning Board members, my name is Audrey. I'm one of the senior here for the town of Clayton, and I'll be presenting Winston Point 3H Type 3 Conditional Rezoning. This is a major modification to an already approved master plan that was approved under a plan development process. This is the project number 2024-138-CZM. So the request is to rezone the subject, a parcel from PDR to CZR, to modify the use church to single-family attached, as well as the dimensional standards. The property size is around 12 acres and is located on the south part of Winston Road, east of Red Jasper Way, and it's located in Clayton ETJ. The lot is currently undeveloped, and as you can see on the map, we did the public notice sign. Here is just to show you the current zoning, which is PDR, so planned development residential, and goes to CZR Conditional Rezoning Residential. Here is the master plan that we're doing the major amendment to. So we're doing the major amendment, just like it was specified before, change the use from church to single attached dwelling that constitute a total of 87 units that is proposed for this Phase 3H, and it's representing 7.4 units per acre. As you can see, some of the dimensional standards also changed to fit better this use. And so it's also worth mentioning that further development will require site plan and CD's approval and will be reviewed under the UDO. The future land use map indicates low-density residential as a designated future land use for this parcel. And so staff observed that it was inconsistent with this designation because low-density residential has a three units per acre gross residential density, which I said before, this one has 7.4, which exceeds that land designation. But still, staff find that this request is reasonable because it matched a surrounding development pattern, as well as matching the Conference of Growth Plan goals and strategies. For the conditions of approval, I only included seven to nine on this presentation. Those are really the important ones that we need to have a look on it tonight. So condition number seven, just like I said, is the dimensional standards that also reflect on the master plan. Condition number eight speaks to the current situation where there's an offset of Red Jasper Road with disciple ship drive and further, I mean, collaboration with the applicant, but as well as NCDOT will be required to correct that situation. Condition number nine speaks to the required right line turn, and this is a requirement from NCDOT. For consideration tonight, should the rezoning be approved, the associated conditions of approval would be tied to the land in accordance with general statute. For tonight, planning board shall make a recommendation to Town Council for their decision, and the staff recommendation is to recommend approval while being inconsistent with the 2045 Conference of Growth Plan. And that represents motion number two on your consistency statement sheet. May you have any questions for staff? We're here to answer with the best of our knowledge. I believe we also have a traffic engineer from the applicant in the room with us to answer more in-depth question about traffic.
Does anyone have any questions of staff?
Can you clarify a little more on condition number eight? When it says NCDOT has asked the property owner, which property owner are we talking about? The subject property or the property across the street? To shift the northern portion of Red Jasper Road toward, so that would be of the subject property, moving it to the east?
It's the property owner, this property owner.
The applicant.
The applicant, okay.
Any other questions of staff? Here.
So thank you both for the background. I think that's helpful. So just for a process question, the plan development was approved by the county, then ETJ expansion happened. There were several changes throughout the last decade and a half. And now, for this particular parcel, it has to, they are required to do a type three conditional rezoning because there's nothing else that really fits that process.
Yes, that's correct. So they, they've done several changes over the years. Nothing triggered a major modification, but changing the use type and adding units, that is what has triggered them to have to update that master plan, which only can be done through this process. And so the best, per the UDO, the path forward for that, for updating a plan development with a master plan would be conditional zoning, because all the PDS have become conditional zonings.
Okay.
And so that is why that was required. And again, the master plan requirements 20 years ago in the county, much different than today's requirements. So it's not a perfect match, but it is the process in place, or the best matching process for getting it amended.
So the underlying, underlying zoning currently, we adopted the county's plan
Yes.
residential development zoning. So that's what's currently on the site. And in order for them to move forward, they did the major modification through the type three rezoning. So I guess to the question I really, we have this map in front of us as part of the type three conditional rezoning, a concept plan is required. Is this qualifying as a concept plan?
Yes, staff has considered this to qualify as a concept plan, because it is a master plan, and concept plan is the closest to that. So looking in the application, we can go through the concept plan requirements if that would be helpful, which are taken from the UDO. So they are required to show the general location of development areas identified by land uses and/or development density or intensity. They are doing that. They have shown the location of this proposed use and the intensity, the density, number of units. General configuration and relationship of the principal elements of the proposed development, including general building types. So they have not shown the specific building types. However, they were not originally required to do so in their master plan when this was proposed as a church. And so that is why that was not required with this amendment. Identification of, for the entire district and each development area, the acreage types and mix of land uses, number of residential uses by use type, that was provided in their amendment. They do have it listed as 87 units, and they do show where that's occurring in Phase 3H. General location, amount and type of open space set aside, that was not shown on this plan. But again, that was not shown on the original master plan, which is why it was omitted from the concept plan or master plan amendment that you see today. The onsite transportation circulation system, that was not shown for this specific phase because it was not required at the time of the original. The general location of onsite potable water and wastewater facilities and how they connect to existing systems, that was also not required in the original. And it is worth noting that these are private utilities or county utilities, since this is in the ETJ, so they will not be connecting into the town system. And then the general location of all other onsite public facilities serving the development, including but not limited to parks, schools, bus shelters, and facilities for fire protection, police EMS, and solid waste management. There are no other onsite public facilities serving the site. So it does say onsite. The last one was the dimensional standards, including consistency with the conditional zoning district dimensional requirements or any requested deviations, which they do provide on this plan as well. So there are a few items in that concept plan that's typically required that's not provided. The reason for that and why they were omitted was because the original master plan did not have them on there.
Will they be coming back before us at some point?
They will not be coming back to the board. So if this gets recommended, you guys will make a recommendation tonight. If council does ultimately approve it, they'll be subject to construction drawing and major subdivision reviewed by the technical review committee. And at that point in time, that's when they'll have to show their road network, stormwater facilities, the full design.
Any other questions of staff?
I find it interesting that, and I get that this is an amended master plan. You know, the last meeting we had, there's this eight-year-long project to get a conditional zoning permit for three townhome units, and they were very detailed concept plans, and yet this one's just a square that's highlighted and says, we want to put 87 units here. And that tells me that if they know they want to put 87 units, somebody has laid this out to some degree, and I think it would have been really helpful to see at least a concept sketch of that layout. You know, at the end of the day, does it really affect whether we vote yes or no, approve this, or it gets on? Because to a degree, it does meet towns, the UDO requirements. But for the sake of clarity, it would have been nice to have seen whatever kind of concept the applicant had for this. Because again, obviously, they've done some kind of initial design because they know they want to get 87 units on the site. So I would like to have seen more information on this.
And I'll let the applicant, when they come up to speak, they can speak a little bit more to the layout that they're envisioning for the site. I will note the project that came before you last month, that entered under the, our town of Clayton code. So this one, we're kind of working with something that we inherited from the county's jurisdiction. And that's why we are where we are today with, you know, what the expectations are for the labeling. But the one last month did come in, in 2023, so a lot more requirements at that point in time for development standards.
Still, it's, it's very, I see his point. It's frustrating. I feel like if I were an applicant, I'd be very frustrated that regardless of what happened 20 years ago, or eight years ago, or anywhere else, somebody comes before this board today, and two different people can come here from one meeting to the next and have a different standard and a different thing that we get to look at to make a decision. And that, regardless of where they were in the ETJ then or now, today, they're coming before this board, and that inherently seems unfair to me.
Just to follow up, perhaps this is a legal question around the vested right. Do they have any vested right to the new request? Or are they simply allowed today for a church that was under the original planned development that was approved by Johnston County?
So today, if they came in for development of the parcel, they would be allowed to develop a church. So they have no other allowances for the site except that church use.
So with that, I mean, it's been 20 years, they're in the Clayton ETJ now. There is responsibility to obviously move through the process. So without, I can understand the staff decision or the applicant's desire to use the, what existed through the planned residential process and try to carry that forward. But we do have new requirements that we've required other applicants to go through. And if they are looking to carry out a new use with higher, with residential density that is higher, then it seems like it should follow the process laid out for every other existing type three conditional zoning. And that may be more of a comment than a question, but I'll, I'll stop there.
Anyone else with questions or comments to staff before we hear from the applicant?
I agree with the comments my peers made. When we see a master plan that has everything filled in on it, except for the specific plat that we are to consider being just blank, it's difficult to approve something. And the other thing I'll say is, this is the reality of what we have going forward with the UDO now. This is going to become more and more common, and we are going to see more and more of this. So I think that if we are going to follow the process that the UDO lays out in detail here, unfortunately for some of the applicants that appear before us, they're going to have to follow that process if it has not, if they, if they haven't started with it yet. That's the reality of where we're going with this, with the new UDO. And the UDO is, is very specific in stating that a concept plan is required. There are other items. Wastewater is another condition that has to be detailed in the, in the application, how that's going to be handled with a type three. And I'm just not seeing that in, in this application, unfortunately. Do we know, is this, was this considered, when it was a county property, was this considered an ESA, an environmentally sensitive area? Do we know that?
That I do not know offhand, but that's something that we can look into.
Okay. Because that, based on the density I'm seeing here, I'm guessing it was not. Maybe the applicant can, can address that. But I think that's something also we need to consider as we look at items that are coming before us, that, that does not necessarily impact our rules and our ordinance, but it is something to keep in the back of our mind, that the county had these designations in place prior for certain reasons, especially to, to protect these watershed areas, which I see quite a few on this, on this concept plan. I guess the last thing I'll say is, my expectation would be if we're seeing a concept plan, that we see streets and proposed units laid out so that we can make a better informed decision. I was at the site today. One of the things I noticed, and it is called out in the condition number eight, I really feel strongly that this turn lane situation needs to be figured out. I don't know how we can strengthen this, because right now, if you're approaching from the east on Winston Road, the left turn lane, the turn-in lane for Red Jasper ends about 30 feet short of the entrance to this property. And to access that left turn lane in, you have to go into the opposing left turn lane for the church, or not for the, for the school, excuse me. That's got to be addressed, because that, that, and I understand there's a condition here. Maybe the applicant can speak more to this. Last thing, Jasper Road in that area, right where, again, we don't have a site plan, so I can't tell you where the entrance to this property is supposed to be from Jasper Road. But I took a look out there, and the first thing I noticed when I was going down Jasper Road was it's a really tight road. If you're gonna, it's 21 foot wide. Where I live is 27 feet. I don't know what the standard is for the town, but if you have vehicles exiting and entering and exiting out of there, and we're talking about 150 vehicles, taking a right turn out of that on the Jasper Road, that is a really narrow road in there. And it's noticeable as soon as you turn onto the road.
You're speaking of Red Jasper Road specifically?
Red Jasper Road specifically.
And I will note, too, those are DOT roads. So those were designed in accordance with DOT approval.
Okay.
Since it is in the ETJ, none of the roads out there are town roads.
Okay. So I'm not sure if that standard changes when you've got a turn lane coming from a side road or not, but it's really tight in there, especially if you're going to have in this concept plan, you've got one, two, three, four, you've got four home lots sitting there. If there's any on-road parking there, it's, it's, it's going to be tight.
And one thing to note, too, before the applicant shares their presentation or overview, if the board did choose tonight, the board could postpone the project to next month and request additional revisions. But I'll let the applicant do their presentation, but that is an option that you all have if you would like to see more detail.
Any other questions or comments to staff? Thank you very much. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Matthew Rhodes with Smith Anderson Law Firm in Raleigh on behalf of the applicant. We don't really have a presentation for you guys tonight. I think staff did a great job laying everything out. I feel like it's fairly straightforward. But I do have here with me tonight, I guess we have Preston Royster, who's with Thomas and Hutton, the civil engineering firm working with the applicant, and Nate Boquin, who's with Nick Adams, who's a traffic engineer. So I'd like to bring them up to kind of address some of the questions that, that the board asked staff earlier. I think Mr. Royster, if you'll come up, he can address the concept plan issues and a couple of those other questions as well.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Preston Royster. I work for Thomas Hutton Engineers, or Engineer Company. We are the engineers of record. With regards to the concept plan, we discussed this process at length with staff. Because the master plan had some age on it, the determination was made that a preliminary layout was not needed at that time, which I understand if it was under the new UDO, we would, we would have provided that. And during the review process on other phases of this project, we had to go through multiple minor amendments to revise road layouts and lot network, I mean, lot layouts. And the decision was made to try to minimize that, since this is the last phase of this project that is part of the master plan. I believe staff can confirm that as well, to try and limit the number of additional minor modifications that come through. So that's why you, you see the plan that's presented before you. We worked with staff, and this is what was ultimately reviewed and brought before you. With regards to that layout, I can speak to the, the conceptual nature of it. There is, or there will not be any additional road connections to Winston Road. The access to the site will be internal off of Red Jasper Way at the very south end of the site, so as far away from Red Jasper Road as possible to allow for stacking and minimize conflicting road movements. As Haley mentioned, these roads are designed to NCDOT standards because the site is located with, outside of the town's corporate limits, so 21 foot is, or actually 20 to 22 feet is a acceptable, acceptable road width according to NCDOT. The Red Jasper Road was approved, obviously, by NCDOT and meets their standards. The intent will be for this phase to also be reviewed and approved by NCDOT and meet their standards, and the roads will be accepted into NCDOT's system. their standards and the roads will be accepted into NC DOT's system as part of that. With regards to sewer, water and sewer will connect internally. It will all connect to Red Jasper Road to the south. I believe it's Carolina Water Sewers that, or Water Services that owns and operates the water and sewer system for the entirety of Winston Point, the Winston Point subdivision. And then those facilities, or at least the wastewater from those facilities ultimately drains to Johnston County's treatment facilities downstream. With regards to the environmentally sensitive area, I am not 100% sure whether this was indeed an environmentally sensitive area, or deemed to be an environmentally sensitive area when the master plan was approved. My professional opinion would be that it is not, or was not, just due to the lot size as well as having municipal sewer access to this property. With that said, we are showing, or when this master plan was approved was roughly the time that the Neush River Stormwater Regulations and buffer rules were put into play in the early 2000s. So we are respecting stream buffers with this project. On this phase, there are no stream buffers, but in other phases there are and those areas are left either vegetated or undisturbed as required by NC DEQ. In addition, with regards to stormwater, we do have to meet the, the town's stormwater regulations with regards to peak flow and nutrients, or nutrient export and pollutants. So there is a stormwater control measure proposed on this, on this phase of the project to reduce that peak flow runoff rate as well as reduce the nitrogen export from that site and total spend of solids as well. So we'll have to meet all the town's stormwater, current stormwater regulations. With regards to the conceptual layout, if you can visualize it, we have one road coming in and then two short subroads off the side of that. Unfortunately, it's a small site, so it's not a lot of options or a lot of different configurations that could be considered here. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have questions to this gentleman or any of the others that are here? The applicant?
With regards to the offset roads, Nate Boquin will speak, speak a little bit more to that.
In fact, why don't you come up and talk about that and we'll hear, hear from all of you and then we'll ask any questions we have.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Nate Boquin. I'm traffic engineering lead with McAdams. So as was mentioned, we've been assisting on this project for quite a few years here with the, the traffic parameters on the project. So with the offset intersections there, that was something that presented itself, we became aware of quite, quite recently. When we originally prepared the, the designs, and I say we, the, the project team prepared the designs for Red Jasper Way, the school driveway was not in that location. And so we, we prepared the, the plans, started moving forward with, with the process. The school actually constructed their driveway. And then when we constructed Red Jasper Way, we realized that the, there was a miscommunication there and that the locations had not been conveyed to the, the school when they were designing their, their location there. So that is something that we are working with NC DOT on as well as town staff. We've had a meeting here just a couple of weeks ago, working with, with NC DOT to find a path forward there to, to get that resolved. One of the big concerns is that some of the utility equipment, so there's a quite large water line and a master water meter in, in the location there. And so just wanted to be, be sensitive of, of the potential impacts that a full shift on our side of, of the roadway would, would entail. And so again, that's, that's why we are working with NC DOT because it's going to involve both shifting our side and/or shifting the, the opposite side of the road. And at which point is that's, that's not a property that we, we own. So we can't just go out and fully shift the, the roadway in its current location.
Were you involved in the TIA on this as well?
I was not involved in the original TIA, but we have reviewed that TIA. We prepared a memo reviewing the, the trip generation from that original TIA as well as what the trip generation for the full site looks like now. And that's, that's also been some conversations with NC DOT, just to confirm that they're still comfortable with the findings of that TIA, that we still fall within the, the original parameters of that TIA.
I am, so the detail was provided to us in our packet. I'm having a difficult time understanding, maybe you can help me with this, how daily trips in 2001 were 21,391. And here we are 24 years later and that total trip count number has gone down to 14,600. And when this was done in 2001, I know these assumptions were included in these daily trips. And now this has been built out to some degree. So I'm having a real hard time understanding how it can go down 40%.
So that, that is a result of just some of the changes for the master plan over the years. Originally, that, that original TIA included 1,100 single-family homes, 50 patio homes, 300 townhomes, 150,000 square feet of retail, a lot of, of items that have not come to fruition, in particular being the 150,000 square feet of retail. And so taking that out of the equation, that's the resultant of the, the large trip reduction that the, the full site is looking at. And that's one of the big drivers from when we're working with DOT on this, why they are still viewing that, that original TIA as being valid, is that we're not generating more trips than we had previously. In fact, we're generating quite a few less, quite substantially less than what we had. And we're still constructing all the, the same transportation improvements.
I would probably also argue that I-42 in the Clayton bypass on that section did not exist at this time too. So you probably had a lot of people that were traveling down Winston to Cornwallis to make their way into Raleigh. And now that I-42 is there, since that was the last segment built, it probably had something to do with it too.
Yeah. And actually, just to clarify, the, the volumes, the, the numbers that you're seeing in that table, that is solely just the trip generation for the project. That's not looking at any, any volume counts out on the roads.
I have a question. Can we go back to condition nine?
I don't know if that's forward or back on this side. Sorry.
Will you, or I guess the applicant, I guess in this case, be funding the construction of whichever turn lane and not DOT?
Yes.
Or do you get to decide which one you get to build or is that DOT telling you which one to build?
We are working with DOT on that. We want to make sure that we're constructing the appropriate turn lane. In particular, whether or not, and this doesn't necessarily apply to specifically the 3H that we're looking at today, but looking at the layout or that other side of Winston Road and making sure that we're, we're constructing that in the proper location, that turn lane.
Okay. I guess this might be for town, but since this is a master plan and it's, seems like, or at least from the maps, this is very underdeveloped at this point, there's really no anticipated date of when this full area would get built out, right? Like, there's no way to really know that, is there?
In terms of the traffic improvements or?
Well, just the overall layout of the master plan. So like, obviously a lot of these neighborhoods that are in here are not fully constructed yet. So being from my civil engineering background, my recommendation would be just due to a safety hazard, since you're coming around the curve, the right turn lane at the school would be a better placement rather than Winston Road, just from a safety perspective. And then since that's also where most of the higher development's going to be for the future, which of course is not built out yet, which was another question I was going to have, but once I did the math, the units are about the same for the other as well. To me, that would be the, the smarter location, especially since you're going to be rebuilding the intersection anyway.
Yeah. So one of the, the factors that goes into that, that ultimate location, that right turn lane, that we're still kind of working through with NC DOT is the, the school's driveway was not actually constructed to NC DOT standards. And so we're, we're trying to, to work through that with, with NC DOT of if, if we do connect to that in the future, it's a lot for us to, to be bringing that road up, up to NC DOT standards. And so we're working with them as well as town staff of the potential to not make that connection, at which point that would just serve the, the school.
So to Mr. Gluson's point, I did the math as well and you were, the, the original master plan proposed 1,450 homes. We're at 1384 now. So it's basically comparable in size. So that, we're losing a church, we're replacing it with 87 townhomes potentially. The school's still there. So to your point, I think the only difference is 150,000 square foot shopping center. You talked about the changes affect traffic count. I don't know how much that does, but I am, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I am skeptical of a 40% reduction when the number of houses is the same and the only thing we've lost is retail. So that, with the current configuration at this intersection, it's very concerning, especially because that left turn lane going into Red Jasper, to get there, you have to hit the opposing traffic. And I think we all know this, so it's, it's not ideal.
On that, Nate mentioned that we were meeting, we met with DOT. DOT is taking a little bit of the responsibility for this because they approved the driveway permits in current location. So it's a priority for them as well. They're well, well aware of the safety concern there. So it's a priority for them. It's a priority for everybody who's trying to figure out the best way to, to address it.
So between this project, DOT, the town, everyone missed this, the misalignment between Red Jasper and the, I guess the school entrance?
I hate to throw DOT under the bus since they're not here to per, to object, but they approved the driveway permits and all, you know, the driveway locations in the location where they are constructed today.
What?
So the master plan, the master plan, we went back to it, it shows the driveways aligned, but they were submitted at different times to the town. So the town had no frame of references to where they were.
And I presume they were, it was different folks submitting at that time?
Correct. It was different engineers and different applicants and, you know, even different from the staff that's here today.
So for this particular parcel that we're talking about tonight, this is a, a brand new team from the original master plan?
Correct.
Okay. With that, y'all know the overall density of the entire planned residential development as it exists today? Because I know there's a ton of different phases and I was, I was looking through some of the phases outside of the existing townhomes that are internal to the development.
Right. I believe currently there are 1,200 and it's either, originally approved on the master plan, the TIA is a little bit different. The TIA assumed more units than what was approved on the master.
The master plan's on.
Right, exactly. So the master plan approved 1,244 units originally. The most recent modification increased that amount to 1,295. I think there was a math error somewhere in one of the tables and that was before this team was on board. But the current count for the entire development is 1,382 with the proposed conditional zoning that's before you tonight. So it's still below what was originally accounted for in the TIA, but it's slightly more than what was approved on the original master plan. And that's what.
Do we know the total acreage for the, the planned residential, the master plan? I'm, I'm trying to get the, the density calculation.
I can give it to you. So it's on there.
Oh.
So the overall for the whole site is around 1.47, but when you actually do the comparison, so the 3H site of what they're proposing for the 7.14 is comparable to Phase 7B. It was around the same density. And then Phase 8B was like three. So that was around like the original towns. So, but that's just because those are the only townhome pods. The rest of it was all single family.
All single family.
That, that's correct. It's about 840 acres total in the entire site. So 1,300 units over the 840 acres is about one and a half unit per acre for the entire project. But the, there are pods of higher density residential with the two townhome pods, which even then we're below the townhome, the rest, or townhome number that was approved in the original TIA. I think it was 300 townhomes. We're below that. I think we're at 100 or 237 or something like that.
Yes, that's helpful. I, I think, trying to get a flavor of, you know, there, we're using this as a reference in a new, in a modification that we're using as a type three conditional re-zoning for the purposes of this evening. The use is changing and the density is increasing, though it is comparable to Phase 7B, which I understand, that's also an internal part of the development, which I think is just important from, you know, trying to keep the character and the look and the feel of this area of town. I guess that, that's what I'm trying to get, get a handle on.
And the townhomes that back on the Winston Road or pulled off of Winston Road, so there's a buffer there between the two.
Correct. Yep. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else with comments, questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. This is a public meeting. Are there members of the public who wish the speaker be heard this evening regarding this re-zoning? Yes, ma'am. Come forward. Tell us your name and your address, please.
My name is Lauren McCourt and I live in Winston Point South. And I'm actually the president of the HOA Board. And we have some concerns about all of the development of Winston Point. I'm not sure if you all are aware, but our houses that were built in 2017, the roads still have not been turned over, which stops us from having the sheriff come. They won't take care of anything there because the roads haven't been turned over. We, as an HOA, don't own, own the pool. It's still owned by the declarant. We pay thousands of dollars every year to maintain it and it, it just keeps piling up and piling up because our original declarant, who owns all this property, is not following through with what he should. And now you keep adding to Winston Point and the HOA is drowning because now you're going to have 1,300 houses and one pool? That's just one example. We have over 12 ponds in the current unit, which were never completed properly. So now we have to take that on because Matt never completed them properly. And now you're adding 12 more with the D.R. Horton area. And we, we're, we're struggling because you keep growing and we're not getting the help from anyone to get everything taken care of. We've spent thousands of dollars on legal fees and we just need help from someone.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public who'd wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am. Come forward.
Good afternoon. I'm Patty Harold-Hilburn with D.R. Horton. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I just wanted to address a couple of things. One is the, I'm sorry, what was your name? Lauren. We have.
Ma'am, address the board, please.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. We have talked with Matt Stevens about the fact that the roads that she is, has, has talked about there, about them not being turned over to DOT or DOT not taking them over to be maintained. This has been like about a month ago that we realized that they were not DOT roads yet. And so Matt's engineer has been working with DOT to get those roads, Winston Club Boulevard and Winston, Winston Point to, to be turned over to DOT, get them to where they can be. So I wanted to address that, number one. But number two, I wanted to talk about the actual shift again. And we understand that there's an issue there. We're, we're very aware and we know that it's, 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 could be a really big issue down the road and, and maybe even today. But we are working with DOT. DOT has, they're talking internally. As Nate said, we, we met with DOT and the town and the school across the street, the, the south side. And we've worked, we've worked hand in hand with the school on a lot of, a lot of the road issues. DOT, as Nate and maybe Preston said, they have taken responsibility for what has occurred and we're working. said, they have taken responsibility for what has occurred. Um, and we're working with them to try to come up with even a temporary solution. Um, you know, we have told them based on the number eight condition there that we will, um, shift Red Jasper as, as, as far as we can, um, without, you know, getting into the master meter. It's pretty big. I'm sure if you've ridden down that road, you, you've seen it. Um, and, and so, and DOT, um, had expressed that they would be shifting the school. And that's part of their, um, admitting responsibility for that, I believe. But, uh, I just wanted to address those and I'll be happy to answer any other questions that I, that I can or my team can.
Let's get the rest of the public comment if you would, and then we, we'll come back to them. Let's get the rest of the public. We've moved on to the public already. I'm sorry. Anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am. Come up.
My name is Gabriella Carter. I live in.
You speak up a little bit, please.
Sure. Sorry. Um, I also live in Winston Point. Um, I guess I have more comments more than questions. It's just, um, I don't understand how people are, they want to construct more houses where, um, there's still a lot of unknowns. I think because I'm a project manager, um, you go through a plan. You try to create a plan before you get approvals. You don't go and get approvals and then figure it out. Uh, we're talking about a ton of people that will be affected. Um, and I think that's unfair to not consider people that already live there and then newer people coming here, um, already with problems. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that wishes to be heard tonight? All right. Any comments from the board this evening? Questions?
Yeah, this is a question either for staff or for my colleagues here. Um, how long does it usually take for, um, um, a development like this to shift the responsibility from maintenance of its streets to the DOT?
Um, I would say it varies by the development itself. Um, I can let D.R. Horton kind of explain, you know, typically in their experience, how long it's taken for maintenance to shift over. Um, but there is a process in place for it.
I mean, are we talking years, months?
Typically, years.
Years? Okay. Thank you.
This also, I know we're in the, the comment period. I think I may have an additional question for the, the development team, um, related to, uh, the streets themselves, the DOT streets. Have they not been turned over because the build out, uh, the phase, the phases that are required to be built out before it's turned over have not been completed? Or are they not turned over because DOT is concerned about accepting them into the, their network?
So as mentioned, uh, that was a different design team than, than the team that's here today. Um, typically the, the process is that the roads are constructed to a point, you may not install the final lift of asphalt. Um, once the, once the minimum density is met on those streets, and I think it's four units or four houses per road or something like that, depends on the length of the streets, um, you can request acceptance into the NC DOT system. You have to get a builder's standard letter from NC DOT, which includes testing of the subgrade or documentation of testing of the subgrade acceptance of the asphalt. They may come out, mark some areas of pavement they need to be repaired. Those repairs have to be made. Um, but that process is initiated by generally the developer, the landowner. Um, and like I said, the, the previous phases were not part of the design team that's currently here. As a matter of fact, I think phase, Red Jasper Way, phases three C to three G are the first phases that D.R. Horton is constructing on this project. So those obviously have not gone through that process or come to that point yet when they have to go through acceptance. Um, so, so we can't necessarily speak to what's, what's happened in the previous phases, but the intent is for, and I'll speak for D.R. Horton here, is to turn the roads over to NC DOT as quickly as possible. So they assume the maintenance responsibilities on those roads once the minimum densities are met and all of the NC DOT requirements are met in order to be accepted into NC DOT's system. At least from my, from my side, that can take years, as Haley mentioned, um, but it's normally done as quickly as it can be done. So that, uh, the responsibility is in DOT's court.
Okay.
And projects I've worked on, you generally try and turn them as quickly as we can. We're not, don't want to leave the HOA or, you know, the homeowners holding that responsibility.
Yeah. And, and I'm not trying to hold any of the comments against Shaw for the larger development. I can understand this has been kind of patchwork over the course of seemingly twenty-five years. Um, but, you know, we have to evaluate this parcel and it is a part of this larger master plan, um, and the planned development.
Right. And it ties to one of the streets that D.R. Horton is working on. So it, it does tie to one of the streets that is part of this design team's responsibility, or at least the owner's responsibility, not necessarily mine. But, so it connects to that. So it wouldn't connect to one of the substandard existing streets or something like that that's, may currently exist or a, a street that's not currently at least owned in, in route or in line to be accepted into NC DOT's system.
I could, so I could understand there would be a challenge if, uh, so let's, I'm just going to hold up my paper here. If D.R. Horton and the design team is working on this half, and then this half has been with a different property owner with their own responsibility to get the streets up to standard, you're going to be implicated, you're implicated because they have not done their job on their end. Let's just, for reference. Um, but we all, I mean, because of how the project has moved through, we could have very well had a standalone project that we have all this context around. Um, but we're, we're having to look at it for both it being kind of a new project here tonight. Um, let's pretend all of it has nothing to do with, we're just looking at townhomes. And then within this larger, uh, master plan, we have to also consider that. So I, I'm a bit concerned that if there are DOT streets later in, in a different part of the project that are not up to the standard and have not been turned over, and if it's been since twenty seventeen and there are people living on it, um, that of course raises questions about what, how does that implicate the projects you are working on in the other phases?
Right. And that's, that's why I mentioned that this project ties to a road that we have direct control over versus a road that we do not have control over. So Red Jasper Way is developed and is currently under construction by D.R. Horton and, or the applicant for this change of use of conditional zoning. So this project ties directly to the project that's under construction by the applicant now. So it's, they're, they're tied together. It's, it's, we're not off to the side tying to a street that was built in twenty seventeen or by another developer that we've got no control over whether or not it is accepted or up to standard.
Okay.
So this one is, is an extension of the current phase three that's already under construction by the applicant.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So this, the, the, this entire master plan was originally approved by the county, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I don't know specifically on this one, what the condition was, but typically when they approve a, a, a development like this, as a part of those plans, there's a percentage completion that triggers, they will not allow you to exceed that amount, if I'm correct, until the, the roads are turned over. I, I think I'm speaking correctly about this. I'm not sure. It doesn't necessarily impact what we're talking about here, but just for the sake of the record, I've, I've seen some plans where they may specify seventy-five percent of the lots have to be completed. Um, if you want to do seventy-six, you have to turn the roads over. So those conditions, I don't know if one of, if that exists for your development, for example, but that would be something to look into. They will sometimes include that in their approval process. Um, one of the things we have to do up here now when we make a recommendation, um, to the town council is, does the plan, um, comply with the comprehensive growth plan? Um, there's other things we have to look at. Um, and one of those is, does it comply with our current UDO and the steps that take place in that UDO? Um, unfortunately, because of the timing, this, um, this has come in after the, the new UDO has been implemented. Um, and I see several examples in here where, in my humble opinion, it does not comply with our standards for the UDO. Um, at least in the submittal process, um, without having access to, um, a site plan, it's hard to make a judgment on this. Um, based on what I've seen today, um, honestly, I'd prefer not to vote against this. So I would prefer, if we come to a vote on this, um, I would have a hard time voting yes on this. Um, my personal opinion, I would like to see this tabled until some of these things are resolved, especially with DOT. Um, I'd like to see a, um, a, a more complete site plan. Um, so, um, that's kind of where I'm standing on this at this point.
If, if I may, we, we are working with DOT every possible way. Um, you know, condition eight is about readjusting Red Jasper Road, which is not even related to our project, that, that misalignment issue, and is trying to help DOT kind of correct what DOT, I, I guess, not to throw them under the bus, but allowed to happen. So we're working with them. I mean, condition eight really has nothing to do with our project. It's helping try to fix that issue. Uh, condition nine with the turn lane on the west side of Winston Point Club Boulevard, um, there's a little gap there, so it may not be as visible. But it says the final location of the right turn lane shall be determined by NC DOT. I think that was a question earlier. Um, so we are working with them. They don't know exactly what they want us to do. So we, we can't say that we're going to, we, we've done everything we can with these conditions to say we will do what DOT wants us to do. Uh, but they don't know what they want us to do yet. And it's kind of hard to just be on hold permanently until DOT decides how they want to handle that. Um, in terms of the, uh, you know, kind of having a site plan there, I, I think, I understand the frustration and the feeling that it's not, maybe not fair that somebody who's amending something from three years ago is going to have a different standard than one that's twenty-five years ago. I understand that completely, but that's kind of the nature of having these long-term master plans and, and kind of the idea of being grandfathered almost is we're, we're looking at the whole master plan and the way it was originally approved and amending that document. Uh, so someone who's coming in with a master plan that was approved five years ago is going to be stuck with their standards and the UDO. So it's, it's, I'm, I'm, I understand what you're saying. My, my dad was in a nursing home where he was smoking and then they banned smoking and he got grandfathered in and everybody else was pretty upset he got to keep smoking. But, uh, it's kind of the nature of it sometimes, unfortunately.
And unfortunately, in this situation, this master plan only has, what I see here, one area that is just a clear white bubble.
Well, and I believe that's been, over time, with the different amendments, as different things have happened. But the original master plan, you know, obviously had a lot more of that kind of on there.
It had a church on it, correct?
Uh, it had, that is the use. Uh, and again, the underlying zoning is not changing. It's just that, that use, correct?
I, I would say that, you know, I don't, I don't like the word fair, talking about your father in a nursing home. I don't like the word fair, but I do like the term equal treatment. And I, I'm still uncomfortable with the fact that we voted on something from the other night. It's not your fault. But this board has to be consistent. And to his point, which is the point I'm looking at the whole time, I realize these things have come in stages over twenty-five years. But this is a very well-drone out plan of every single lot, where every single house, every single street. And what we're voting on tonight is the one blank spot on this entire map. The number eighty-seven is not a particularly arbitrary number that you pulled out of thin air. So somewhere you guys have an idea of what this eleven acres is going to look like. And I would have preferred voting on something tonight that showed us what that was going to look like. And I realize you probably don't have to do that. But sometimes, to get things through a board, I think you should do things that you don't have to do just because it would make us feel much more comfortable with what we're voting on. Somebody will make a motion in a moment. I am not going to support this tonight. I think we would be better off, but I'll let the board make a motion. I think we would be better off to push this and let them come back to us with something that's not a blank spot on the map before we make that decision.
Uh, I just have a question. I think that the next meeting is less than four weeks away because of the, uh, December Christmas. So it's like only three weeks? So it's even less time than a month.
Yes, I believe it's, um, December seventeenth. I'll double check the date, but it is a week earlier.
Coming up real quick. Yeah. Just wanted to point that out.
Any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make one quick comment. If it's the will of the board of a, a motion to recommend denial to town council, um, I think that may achieve the, what this board desires, also moving the applicants forward in the process and then allow town, town council to make the decision that they will. Um, I, I don't think delaying, um, a decision unless it's the desire of the applicant to do that, um, may be in their best interests or, uh, uh, because it'll put them to the beginning of the year to get in front of town council. And I don't know if that's something they're interested in doing.
I realize that, but at the same time, our history is not that we don't want to vote no just so we can get it off of our table and get it to the town council to move it along faster, any more than I would vote yes to get it off our table and get it in front of the town council faster. I don't think that's fair to the town council.
And I, I would just point out that, you know, we do have a site plan that we've worked on. That is how we came up with the eighty-seven units. We're not trying to hide the ball here. We were not required by the town to include that in here. Um, and I understand you'd prefer to see it. At the same time, sometimes if we show any plan, that becomes the whole focus of it. So you kind of have this balance of, if it's not required, do you risk opening the issue?
I, I, I understand that, but you see, from our point, a blank spot on a map.
I understand, but we weren't required to submit that by the town. So it's, it's kind of hard for us to, uh, you know, hear that now that it wasn't required, but we're, we're going to require it now.
So there was a, there was a site plan, even if you don't know where the road is going to be sited?
With, uh, Red Jasper, you mean?
Yeah.
How was that? Thanks for that.
Well, and just for clarity, I, I think, I don't think we're asking for an engineered site plan, a concept plan that shows generally where units are at and the general layout to give us a, a flavor of the development in reference to, uh, all the other stuff we've talked about.
Right. So we, we obviously had to put together a plan to come up with eighty-seven units, as, as you mentioned. We were not required to present that or submit it to the staff. And that was intentional to minimize the number of additional minor amendments that we would have to present moving forward. This spot was originally a blank spot on the master plan. It was a church use, but there was nothing shown. Um, there was other, there, as Haley mentioned, this thing's been modified multiple times, multiple different ways, right or wrong. Um, this is the process and the road that we, or the path we were led down with this major amendment and how it was deemed best to, um, best to go through the process to this point. But, uh, as I mentioned, there's, you know, we have a plan. We've actually submitted it to the NC DOT and Carolina Water Service for this. We couldn't submit it to the town yet because we haven't gone through this process and gotten town councils blessing on it. So.
I'll just make one final comment, um, just outside of some of the other things we've discussed this evening. Um, I think I'm fine with, uh, townhome units. I think the, the density is generally where it needs to be, just given the, the nature of the way the rest of the development looks. It would help to have some single family home units, um, facing, uh, the, facing Winston Road, um, to be consistent generally with what we're seeing throughout the rest of the master plan. The other townhome units are interior to the development. Um, so just putting that out there. Um, and then looking at the comprehensive growth plan, uh, policy LU, um, one point two encourages developments which incorporate high-quality design, enhance the quality of life for existing and future residents of the town. Um, I, I think that the misalignment, while it may be no fault of the folks in this room, um, and it may be folks elsewhere that, uh, caused the problem, it's still something that we have to deal with, a design issue that has to be dealt with. And I appreciate the, um, uh, the condition of approver, approval. Um, but I, I think more clarity on what that's going to lead to. And then, um, you know, if we've got folks in other parts of development that are concerned about the standards of the streets, uh, and if they may ever be turned over to DOT, while it may not implicate this particular parcel, um, I mean, I think it's another design element that we all have to be aware of, uh, moving forward.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
And I will note real quick, um, looking through past files, I was able to find from two thousand eight, the existing master plan as of, well, not two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen or fourteen, um, the existing master plan as of May of two thousand fourteen. I don't know if that would be beneficial to show you kind of how it's changed over the year with amendments. Um, I'll leave that up to you all, but there were additional, so the portion north of the South Side Christian School, for example, on the map, that was also a just blank area. So that's been filled in over time now that. on the map, that was also just blank area. So that's been filled in over time now that we have a plan in place for that. So a lot of these areas that show in the phases lots weren't necessarily showing that much detail at the time. So just to clarify.
Someone needs to make a motion.
Like I said earlier, I would prefer not to make a motion to deny this at this point. I think you've heard enough questions come up tonight that we'd like to hear some more information regarding this, so that we can make an educated decision on this. That being said, I would like to make a motion to table this until the applicant is prepared to address the concerns we raised tonight, and I'll leave it at that.
Have a motion. Have a motion by Board Member Carter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Board Member Hooker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Reflect the record, we were in agreement except for one no. Thank you very much, folks, for that. Is there any new business tonight, Haley?
There is not.
Just one question, a clarification. If we make a motion to table, should we add a time limit to when the applicant should return back to the planning board, or?
You don't need to.
Okay, so the next available.
So we have specific deadlines internally for when items get placed on the next board agenda. So for example, December, the deadline is tomorrow, so most likely January would be the next.
Can we, can we as the board, though, I know you have, you have limits or deadlines, but can we as a board, if the applicant would be prepared to show something else at our meeting in three weeks? I would hate to push them to January because our deadline is tomorrow. Can we as a board not request that the town extend them a few days courtesy to get on that agenda, or put them on the agenda now, and they can always cancel on the agenda if they're not ready in three weeks?
We can prepare on the agenda for next month, depending on what they submit, but I would want it to go through our technical review committee, especially if they're showing layout and whatnot, to make sure that there's no discrepancy with code requirements once you start getting into that level of detail. And also to coordinate with NC DOT a little bit more.
I don't like that answer, Haley, because that sounds to me like, we didn't ask, we didn't ask them for any specifics. We were going to vote on them tonight, but if they're going to show us specifics, now we're worried about whether they're good specifics or not.
So the reason for that is because once you start showing that level of detail on the plan, they are, if it did get approved ultimately, they would be committed to that. And so there wouldn't be any adjustment that staff could make to that. And so that's why staff needs adequate time to review what the layout is that they're showing.
I would prefer to see, I don't, you know, I don't need to see what the outside of the building's going to look like or any of that stuff, just some, I don't want to call it general, something less general than a white spot on a map, if that makes sense. I don't, we don't need specifics to the level that the town would start worried about what gets approved. It's more about us having a comfort level.
Those circulation arrows and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah. Something that gives us a little more comfort to agree to something or deny something. I don't want to deny it or agree to it, just based on a blank spot.
So we can work with the applicant to see what their timeframe is for when they could submit something?
I think the thing to keep in mind is, as you go through this process with the applicant, we need to ensure that, because this was a hangup for us tonight, we need to make sure that it complies with the UDO. So that being said, I don't think this is terribly overwhelming for the applicant. There's just certain things in here that we have a responsibility to make sure those things are included in the application, and we didn't see them tonight, unfortunately. So I understand that you've worked with staff on this. There is a disconnect there, unfortunately. And I think, you know, part of this is, "Include a concept plan prepared in accordance with Section 3.3.1E, concept plans associated with a Type 3 conditional zoning." I don't know the specifics of that. I don't think it's a detailed site plan, but it is a concept plan that is defined by our UDO.
We can't hear any more about it from you tonight. We've already moved on past this piece of business. So I would, whatever your comments are, I'd get you to hold them until our next meeting if I could. Just because we moved on from that. Is there any other new business, Haley?
There is no other new business.
All right, hearing none. Any comments, concerns, before we take a motion to adjourn?
I have one item I'd like to go over tonight. So one of the responsibilities we have as a board, and I'll quote the UDO on this, "The planning board shall have the following powers and duties to be carried out in accordance with the terms of this ordinance." Very first one listed, "At the direction of Town Council, perform studies and surveys of the present conditions and probable future development of the town and its environs, including, but not limited to, studies and surveys of land uses, population, economic conditions, housing, traffic, parking, annexation, urban renewal, and expansions of the extraterritorial jurisdiction." That being said, recently, one of Town staff made the comment, which I was not aware of, "The town of Clayton has almost 10,000 residential units in some form of development process, either under construction, and entitlements are waiting to be put into the entitlement process." I've had a difficult time finding exactly how many housing units we do have in the town right now, but I do know it's roughly around 12,000. So to hear that we have 10,000 that are somewhere in the entitlement process, it was, it's a little surprising to me. So where I'm going with this, and Councilwoman Archer, I see you're here tonight, I would ask that maybe the Town Council have a discussion about how we can somehow come up with a dashboard or some type of item that shows us, I understand the town has the GIS map. That GIS map does not seem to be supporting that level of detail and that data for us. As a board, it would be nice for us to be able to understand exactly how many units have been entitled, and what type of housing that is. So single-family homes, multi-unit, those type of things. So I'm asking, you know, for consideration of that, to see if we could have some kind of dashboard that could be used internally, as well as externally. I think we owe it to the citizens as well to be able to tell them, this is what is in the pipeline. Currently, we provided something for them to see it on a map, but it's just, it's just not, it's just not working to that level of detail. So I think it would help us greatly in some of the decision-making we are carrying forward here. And I think it's something that we should be proud of and able to share with the public, you know. So, yeah, so perhaps that could be shared with the Town Council, and we could come up with some type of tool to help with that.
And I will note that the town does have a dashboard. It's, currently, we are looking to update it. I believe GIS and Development Services is working on updates to that, hoping to rule that out in the near future. But it is the exact tool that you're speaking of, which would break down residential unit types in the pipeline coming through.
And at one of our meetings a couple of years ago, that number you just referenced, 10, 12,000, whatever it is, was about 6,000. And I think it's a lot of that waiting on wastewater, and the ability to bring those online is what's held some of that up.
Yeah, and I guess the bottom line is, I think we owe it to the citizens to, to give a little more detail on that number, make it something public. And it's a data point I would love to have in front of me as we have people come before us asking for, whether it's five or 500 additional units. It would, we're in a conundrum as far as the roads are concerned. These have been entitled, but we don't know if they're going to be built or not, and therefore, it's a catch-22. It's hard to do the roads if we don't know these are going to come to fruition or not. It would be good to have some detail on those numbers to help with this, so.
Since we're in the business of asking for requests this evening, I also think it would be wise to have some sort of an alignment meeting between staff, the planning board, and Town Council on the future of development in Clayton. I respect and appreciate the independence of the planning board versus Town Council, but I also respect the time, effort, and money that developers are putting in to build and bring folks to Clayton. And I don't want us to be in the positions where folks come to the planning board, we have a higher expectation of what we want to see in, based on the plans that the planning board reviews, including the transportation plan, the downtown master plan, the Gateway 42 plan, the UDO, the comp plan. I think we just need to make sure that our expectations are all aligned, so that when plans get to the planning board, they're to the expectation we've set. And then ultimately, when they get to Town Council, even if it's different from the desires of the folks here, that it's to the expectation they expect as well. There is becoming more and more limited space to build and develop in Clayton. I think, I speak for myself, when we have very exciting, comprehensive plans for the future, not only around downtown, but in the outskirts of town, where we're seeing a lot of development, and we all need to be prepared and aware of how we move forward, including this board and the Town Council. So I think that might be helpful to just do a bit of a debrief on where we've been and where we're headed.
Last thing, I promise. Every agenda packet for the Town Council has a boilerplate at the bottom titled "Information for the Public." We don't have anything like that on our planning board agendas. There is, there seems to be some confusion within the public as to exactly what we're doing and how this process works. I think that would be an excellent location to put two or three paragraphs in there, explaining our process as well. The fact that we make recommendations, what appears before us, just a standard boilerplate to put at the bottom of our agendas, to help inform the public a little more of what's happening here prior to coming in. So that's my last comment for the night.
Any other comments tonight? I'll accept the motion. What, you want to make a comment? Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.